I will call the Select Board meeting for Saturday, January 26, 2019, to order. I would recommend, remind people that MMN is covering the meeting and broadcasting it live. And the purpose of this meeting is to provide you a follow-up to the Long Range Plan envisioned Concord, raised to 2030, and to see what actions the Select Board should be taking in that regard. I know, Mike, you were the one who kind of urged that we have this meeting and get this on the agenda quickly. We, I think all of us were at the lead woman voter breakfast this morning and had to leave a little bit early because this was really the one time that everybody could get together. So I'm sorry we don't have a large public gathering, but I think we will be getting a lot of work done. And I'll sort of turn it over to you at this point to start.
Well, thank you. Well, I think, I think we do need to sort of get on top of this a little bit. The Long Range Planning Committee came and spoke to us, they presented the plan. For those who have looked at it, it's massively comprehensive, very well organized, very well detailed. At the, at the end of the plan, in the final, final section, it sort of lays out all of the goals, actions that can be taken based on various elements. And if you look at that, I mean, there are literally hundreds of them, involving every board, commission, department, within the town. And while we accepted the report of the committee, I think our obligation goes a little bit further than that. And that is for us to articulate, if we can, our support for various components of it. And to that end, I don't know who produced the document that you sent around, but...
It was the Planning Board or Derek.
I went back, I went back through it again, looking at that, and what I, what I attempted to do, and I have something I can hand out to you, is I went through each one of the plan elements at the back, looking at each of the goals and each of the actions, and extracting from that those actions associated with goals that explicitly called out the Select Board was having responsibility for either taking some action or providing some leadership. And that was essentially the document that you sent around. Although when I went through it, I found slightly different, different ones, but I think those are the ones we should concentrate on. I have this, which I haven't had a chance to proofread, so I'm sure, given my screen capabilities, it's beset with typos and that. But it's really, the first parts of it are just me sort of getting my arms around it. If you go to the second page, in the center of that page, it lists the actions by plan elements that the Select Board is called out for. And that goes on for the next few, few pages. And at the end of this document, and we can come back to it later after we've dealt with these issues, I have two other specific recommendations that I would, I will then propose. I would get them on the table now. There are also, in addition to calling the Select Board out for activities, there's a ton of activi, actions that are asked of the town manager. So I want, at some point, I think we would want to ask the town manager to respond to this, to say, "All right, here's what they've said, here's the way I see that, our priorities." And I would hope we would do that before Mr. Whalen leaves, because of his almost long tenure in involvement in this type of stuff. And then the second recommendation that I want to make is that we are all liaisons to various committees and boards. And I would encourage us to go through that act implement, it's called the Implementation Action Chart, I think is the name of it, back. To go through that and pull out those goals and those actions that are associated with the various committees that we have liaison responsibilities for. And for us then, in our liaison role, and the next time we meet with the committee, to ask them to please set aside some time in their committee meetings to review these kinds of actions and be able to come back to us and talk about what they would like to do. So that's neither of those things we have to do, but I would suggest that they are things I think that would help.
We can afford to move those along.
Move those along, and then it comes back to us. And I think our job then is, there may be some conflicts or some overlaps, and that will be what we want to do. So, yes.
If I could interject, Mike, thank you for the document you put together. It's interesting because sort of coteriously, Lynda and I were asked to go and look at this whole process, and given open meeting law and our interest in not having a subcommittee, I think we were all busy doing very overlapping efforts, which probably means it was going to be far more robust in looking at the Select Board's recommendations or the Select Board's obligations under the new long-range plan. And Lynda, you should jump in at any point because you were part of the work that we did. We took a slightly more, I think, practical look at this versus goal setting. Both are going to be necessary, and thought about what, given the fact that we are going to be in transition, as with the town manager search and the new town manager coming in, on the implementation, sort of flipping and saying, "What's near term? What are we going to be working on as a town from the long-range plan in the next year or so?" Because that's what our new town manager is going to come, is going to inherit in terms of managing. And that's one of our responsibilities as a Select Board. And some of which is, are items that are already somewhat underway, because we're going to have budgets that will reflect some of these actions. So marrying that with what, what our goals are, and looking at, coming up with, how can we be most helpful? So I think this is getting to the last point you made, Mike, in terms of leadership, both through the committees that we're liaisons to, and, but also leadership in terms of working specifically with the new town manager and whoever, we've talked to Chris about this, whoever might be the designated to oversee some of this coordination, because many of, whether it's a specific Select Board called out goal, or whether it's the goal of a town department, all of these goals intentionally, the way this long-range plan was pulled together, are intentionally horizontal. None of them necessarily fall just with under one town department's responsibilities. And that's different. It used to be that we would get a checklist at the beginning of the year that reflected the long-range plan, and it wasn't necessarily a checklist that was representing the coordinated efforts of multiple town departments or multiple committees. So again, I'm looking at, at almost a way of a timeline and a way of, of reflecting that when we have accomplished a goal, we've also been able to capture the efficiencies of that new approach in the accomplishment of it. Because I think that's one of the, how else are we going to know that this approach was successful? It's not just finishing these tasks, it's having approached differently in accomplishing those tasks. Lynda, did you want to say something? You look like you have wisdom to add to my back.
No, I don't have wisdom to add, but, you know, one of your first questions, Mike, was you were, who put this together, the 10 points? And, and so we learned it was the planning department. And so, you know, I started thinking about how we proceed with this at that very point, because I remember that there was some jockeying around the, the language about, was the planning, the planning department accepted this or approved this, that long-range plan, and the Select Board was asked to accept it. And in the end, I don't know what, where we ended up with that, but, you know, there was an interesting point that I noticed right from the beginning. You've clarified that, and, and the, and the plan itself clarified that a charge was given to, by the Select Board to the Envision Committee. So we, you know, whether we accept it or approve that, we clearly see a role now in implementing that. I, from where I stood at this, in my first year tenure here, many of our actions are informed directly by the town manager, obviously, because he's got department heads who are implementing all of this. The, and at the same time, the town manager is informed by us vis-à-vis our impact on his goal statements, annual goal statements. And then we have this, now we have this new Envision Concord plan that, while it states, and a great deal of input and work went into it, and an attempt to provide some specificity in terms of how we proceed, they also clearly state that this is an evolving document and that long-range plan will evolve as we go along. But the strong message that came from this, as we all know, was that there was some cross-department fertilization that was expected in a way that previously had not necessarily been implemented. That doesn't mean that it hadn't occurred, but that there was at least a, obviously consensus and a strong feeling by the committee, after all the input they got, that that needed to be ramped up, so to speak, in terms of the cross-department fertilization. So, you know, needing to, it's good when we all come at this from a slightly different viewpoint of where we want to start with this, but for me, since we already know we've got departments speeding ahead independently, for the most part, speedily, because that's what they, that's how they're currently formed, that's how they think, that's where their internal resources are in terms of budget and all kinds of things, speeding ahead with various implementation of the things that are mentioned in the Envision Concord Report. So, it's, it's particularly important for me to know where, where our departments are and they're thinking right now and where they're starting from. And obviously, Chris has to be the conduit for that to us.
Well, that's the, you know, the two things I said I was going to recommend. One was essentially that's hearing from Chris.
Right.
And the other is then trying to gather the input from various committees. But, so I think those are critical elements to us, because this...
But the various committees, I don't, those are both good points. But including the committees also charging ahead with implementation on specific things that they've picked out, because they fed this report, and, and, as did the department heads, and as did the committees, and as we did. So, it'll be, for me, it'll be a piece of it, and I think that's what you're saying too, it'll be a piece of informing how we proceed. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's, that's correct. It's going to be an iterative process, and I think we have so far been missed sort of in connecting ourselves to the various committees, as you said, some of them have done, mirrors and know nothing, but others have moved ahead. No, fine, that's good. We need to get this coordinated, and we, I think, have the responsibility for, not overseeing the whole thing, but, but ensuring that the kind of cross-departmental, multi-committee interactions, in fact, do take place.
And I think that, that's what I meant by creating some kind of matrix, where you can check the box, simply, you know, you've got a lot of the bones of, of this in the action plan charts, but what we don't have is a timeline and an action, an overarching one for the town as a whole, which then you can visually and, you know, annually or something, similarly, look at where you are and whether or not, I mean, things will change. This is not static, it's not even static right for the second, but it's, so that we could have some kind of moving document that, from my perspective, that we can also keep annual or every several year analysis of to see just how that harmonization effect works. Because I think that's really important from a town perspective. We've tried something very new. This has never been done in Concord, and it hasn't been done very many places. I think it'd be valuable, as we do this, especially to report back to town meeting, when we look at budgets, right? To say, "This is how we, how the implementation of a far more integrated plan has benefited Concord." I think having that as a, a annual report would be really important, because, you know, I'll just call out one, one thing that we know will always happen. There will always be, be big capital projects that loom. You know, we have, we know we're going to have a new middle school, at some point we're going to need a new town facility. These are things that, that don't happen once, and they don't happen surprise, surprise. But looking at how the town has anticipated and planned for, and how it's worked across committees and across departments to result in those things, to feed a seven-year approach, for instance, to a new town facility, or, I'm just throwing out an example. Or, or we could use affordable housing. We're, we're sort of halfway into that right now, because what we've been doing is really the early work that would have been recommended by this. When you look at, for instance, the formation of our different affordable housing approaches, and now we're synthesizing the budgetary piece of that. I think that is, you can see the roots of that somewhat captured. So that would be one of those places where maybe we're steaming ahead, but I think, I don't think we're going to capture that in every single section, because I don't think we've thought about it.
No, I agree. If you, if you again look at this, so there is the issue of how do we get coordinated with the various departments and towns, and again, that was the impetus of those two recommendations. But then if you go back and look at this again, from just our narrow lens, then there are sets of things that were being asked to do, or stark to do, or caused somebody else to do. So for example, in the economic vitality section, goal four...
Which chapter do you want me to?
I'm sorry?
Summary, except you said...
Well, since the thing I wrote, it's on the second page, it's the first bullet. Oh, excuse me, the second bullet.
Yeah.
So one of the items in that, in there is assertion with economic vitality, goal number four, and the particular action that they are suggesting is undertaken, is consider establishing a town economic development staff position. Now, there's lots of other parts of that that are mentioned, I don't remember how many, but the number of additional actions talk about, not the Select Board doing it, but does development staff do it? Well, there isn't in the development staff. So to me, that's a particular item that we should pick up and decide whether we're interested in moving it ahead.
And whether that's the best way to move it ahead, whether to have a position to do it, or whether that that just becomes part of the Planning Board's obligation.
Right.
And I think that's kind of the debate that I kind of see happening on a lot of these.
Well, that's right, that's, that's one of them, that asks us to do something specifically. I think we all would say, "Yeah, something in this area probably is a good thing to be done. We've heard about it from the business community, you know, in the long-range plan. How best to do it?" Not, not sure there's a like set of minds on that yet. So this is one that I would hold up for us to have a particular discussion on. How should we attack this problem articulated in the long-range plan, associated with economic vitality?
And I think for a lot of these, there's also the component of educating the public as to why the need, the fact that town has 6% to 7% of our revenues from taxes comes from commercial or industrial, whereas most towns, it's 20% or 30%, and if we could up that some, we're dealing with a tax revenue that may not produce stress on the school system and on other, you know, aspects. And take advantage of Hanson Field. I'm always amazed that we don't have a higher degree of commercial tax base, we're right next door to Hanson. Seems to me to be kind of an obvious benefit that maybe we're not taking advantage of.
And it's related, although they talk about it in plan primarily to economic development.
Yeah.
You know, it's a whole issue of tourism as well.
Yeah.
So what I would hope happens as we talk about these things, as we identify things like this, that we say, "Okay, there's a topic that we need to figure out how we're going to best go ahead with it." Because the other goal in that same, that same section, the one that's just ahead of it, the action there is maintaining, consider expanding zoning policies to allow for mixed use and appropriate dense development in or around the center. Well, okay, that's on the one hand, a subset of what we should do. On the other hand, as Jane and Lynda pointed out, that's a clear area where there's cross pollination that has to happen between planning and zoning board appeals and stuff like that. So I think that's how we tee up an issue of economic tourist development, and then ask, "What should we do about it?" If you go to the next page, this first two on here are housing. And as Alice pointed out, we are already, in some sense, moving ahead with this. The first goal on the second page is a real estate transfer tax. Well, we have a Warren article talking about that. The second, second one down is again, talks about all kinds of different ways of having other incentives through zoning, or they mention the Amherst property tax incentive, which I'm not positive about, but I think it is, you get a tax advantage if you do something to create housing inside your home for someone over some age. I'm not commenting whether that's a good or a bad idea, but on the one hand, we've already taken action on goal number two, we have had that forward, and we have taken some action on goal number six, in the sense that we have the proposed Warren article to create a surcharge on building permit. So we have addressed that. The thing we haven't addressed again goes back to zoning provisions, and again, that's a cross-coordination one. So, you know, our liaison, who's Jane, is planning, planning, or planning...
They're marching ahead.
No, no.
Right, with or without our direction or input or policy advice.
Well, I think it would be, what are they up to, and could they come talk to us about it, so we can understand a little bit more what they're up to?
We're going to hear on the warrant.
Yeah.
We're going to hear a town meeting, and that's public hearing. So we have to, I just want to say, as we go walk through this, we have to recognize that we are not all aligned in one of the, the Envision Concord never looked at the question of, "Do we want to grow and in what way?" You're making an assumption that there is an economic option for business and commercial development. We don't know, we have, somebody has to say, "What, what does our vision of growth look like? How many new homes, how many new businesses? Where do those businesses live?" And this document, not included in the printed version, has an analysis of potential growth areas. Do we want to follow this appendix D, it's not in there, it's in the, like, appendix D, that lays out, where are the potential future development options for commercial, industrial, and residential? And is that where we think we want to be in the area of economic development? There's a Warren article this year that will address formula businesses in a company center. Is that a good thing for economic development or not? I, I don't know. But we may be asked to speak to that at our town meeting. So our committees are marching ahead with some of these initiatives, regardless of our position on where we would like to go, but they're just absent, you know, a discussion about what does Concord's growth potential and viability look like? That's not, that wasn't addressed in 2018. Possibilities. You bring up something, sorry, that I, I just think is really important, and who better than the Select Board to at least articulate it, which is, what are the overarching questions that we didn't answer but are clearly in the ecosystem around it? Like, do we want to grow? You know, that, that having an opinion on or making a, giving direction on implementation requires us to have at least considered that existential, perhaps, question. And I suspect there won't be others. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that the Envision Concord attempted in its three big ideas to capture some assumptions, but there are, there are assumptions that are, that weren't captured, and that's one, so I just wanted to...
I think, if I recall, the Envision was talking more in affordable housing, the kind of a cluster housing, whereas I think the Affordable Housing Committee was talking about individual homes throughout the town.
I think all options for affordable housing are on the table by all the different housing folks. I think Envision Concord is looking at increasing density as a walkability commuting option for people. So what would that look like? Do we have, you know, second and third story construction all over downtown village districts to allow for that? Is that what we want? So there was this analysis that looked at what is possible, and is, is what is possible what we want?
Right.
So again, I get the idea of walkability and clustering, you know, along the Brillo corridor, and that changes what we look like.
That one question touches on affordable housing, how do we want to grow?
Right, affordable, this is just housing.
Or, or potentially affordable housing, cluster housing, zoning, and transportation, and the environment, because all of those things get checked on some level in that discussion. National direction, public services, etc.
Finance, in terms of affordability, sustainability. I may go be doing a fairly significant analysis of town debt and future, you know, tax increases as a result of some of the plans that, not next year, but certainly the school funding and other projects that will be coming up.
Oh, sorry.
So I think, you know, I think the economic aspects are one thing that often get left out of analysis, of what we can do and what we should be doing.
Well, it's an example, another example of what's dragging what here, because I think it is germane to our discussion. And Alice, you can probably speak to this better than I, but I noticed that the Planning Board recently brought in civic moxie again for a smart growth planning discussion. You know, planning department is planning.
Well, this is the appendix D, that's what I was referencing. So it's in the plan, this whole summary of their analysis, and it looks at areas of potential growth, based just on the numbers. It's not about, is it a good idea or a bad idea, what would it cost to do it? What is, what does the current zoning allow? What is the available land to build on? What is the height that we could go up? So it just took a snapshot and said, "Here's your potential growth as things are today." And is that my question? Is it, are we assuming we are as we are today, and that's what our future will be? Or do we make the changes in the policies and zoning that allow us to go beyond today's Or do we make the changes in the policies and zoning that allow us to go beyond today's vision? This analysis was a, these are, this is the current commercial area and you have X amount of acres available. I loved hearing your discussion when we were driving to the Mass Municipal Association meeting about Boston took a really bold look at their planning. And they looked at all their municipal buildings as well as everything else and said, you know, why don't we move all the municipal buildings out of this, this area? This is now open for affordable housing or housing development. This analysis didn't take that bold approach. It said, this is currently available land, this is buildable, this is not.
Right.
You know, you could build, you could build a three hundred square foot something here. So I think, you know, Boston took a very bold and aggressive look at how you can reimagine plan mass. Imagine if, you know, this building were condos. I'm not suggesting we do that. Or that Kai's Road moved somewhere else. It's a, you know, I don't know how many acres Kai's Road is. But it looked at it in a very bold way. And I'm not suggesting we do that. It's just what we have from the plan is a static moment of what's possible today. It's a great idea, I mean, it's a great plan, you should look at it.
Can I just say that we are doing some of that because we're looking at, we're doing a facilities master plan right now. So we, we are looking at the possibility of having a central municipal office building where we combine the far-flung offices and that may free, that may free up some land or some buildings. So there'll be a little bit of that happening.
No, so I, I said that actually at the meeting too, because I know that that's happening. But the missing piece in that conversation was, so what happens to Kai's Road? Or what happens to the buildings that are vacated? What's, you know.
Now we have an asset that we have a plan for.
Right.
And how do we do that?
Do we sell?
Yeah.
So how, I don't know.
And I'll start with two, two, two nine.
Two, two, two nine, right.
Well, again, I don't want to go back to, if you look at the public facilities part of this, which is on the following page, the very first one, goal number two of this is exactly what Chris just said. This happened. So that's already being done. And if you go down the rest of that list of public facilities and infrastructure, all of those are, each of those remaining three are essentially suggesting that the select board put together or require an assessment. So the first one is assess the capability of town social service programs to meet the needs of the town population. The second one is require a threat assessment with respect to IT. And the third, a very overarching one, you know, create a task force like the governance committee task force to look at overlap. So again, those are all irrespective of what direction we go to or how we define sustainable growth. Those are specific actions that we as a select board could take to help inform us or to help improve the efficiency of, of the government. So, you know, number one is already being done. And the question is, those three, you know, are actions that we should or not, but we certainly could take, we could ask our social services group to provide that assessment. I know as a member of the financial audit advisory committee, we have raised the issue of cybersecurity in town. I don't know where Mr. Howell is on this, but he's come to talk to us about it. So something could already be going on there that we don't quite know about. And then there's that mega task force. So again, that last page is an example of stuff specifically that we are already doing or we are being asked to get going on. And I think we should be in a position at some time to try to directly answer. Analysis point is if you go back to the conversation we had about economic development, it's sort of a higher level of question. So we decided, we didn't really, but we decided, well, economic development is a big issue. We've got to think about that, right? But Alice is saying, well, before you think about that, you better think about this. And I think that's the issue was what is, what kind of growth is the town interested in? Just proposed against a lot of stuff in here about town character and things like that. It seems to me there is a topic that we should be trying to get our arms around and creating whether it's a forum or, I don't know, I'm not suggesting we do a committee, but that's, that seems to me to be a primary question. And it's related to, not a topic in here exactly, but related when we heard Mr. Tarpe recent select board meeting talking about sustainability around financial matters. And we're talking about sustainability around growth. And we had a couple of years ago, a big conversation about sustainability around climate. And I think those are all part of what do we think we can actually do and maintain the kind of town we want to live in?
Well, I think a lot of these goals, we are already taking steps on, but they're not kind of formalized as such. And the assessing the capacity of the town social service program. Clearly, the council on aging has an aspect of that. Commission on disability has an aspect of that. The fire and the police department have an aspect of that. But we probably need to go to tie them together and measure.
Even New Cargo Trust has, because they're worried about, do we have enough funds to kind of support the diversity that's implicit in the law?
And, and maybe to this point, if we, if we get to a place where we can agree on what are our, drilled down our goals, maybe what we do here is develop a model for what I would love to imagine is a much bigger template of how do we do, how are we progressing under the long-range plan? And how are our goals morphing over time? But we can model one, just that kind of an assessment tool for the select board going forward. So that we can then say, okay, this is what we started with, this is where we're going. These are the, these are, now, some of that gets reflected in our, our annual board goals. But I'm looking at something that's far more integrated. And one of the things that we can do as liaisons is then talk about how these are already cross-fertilizing. So we can think about it that way.
But another part of that metric, and you, I think you mentioned it earlier, is that we already see this year's town meeting in the, in the budget and vis a vis the Warren articles that have come forward, an indication of movement on items that were included in the long-range plan that are already moving ahead.
Right.
So that becomes another part of that broader measurement that you're talking about as we put all this together so that we can follow it right through to that, that piece of it.
Right, yeah.
What is the sort of best process to do this? I mean, this, do we need a designated subcommittee of the board that would carry it on? Or, I think we could have kind of various meetings, but, you know, I think you need to get down kind of to the nitty-gritty at some point. What are the?
Can we start with, and going back to what Alice was commenting on in terms of what is the appetite for growth and where? There was some implicit language, explicit language in the, in the plan about not wanting to further put burdens on our current infrastructure. Now, whether we accept that or not, there was, that was at least spoken to in a number of occasions in this document. But stepping back from that, you know, would it be helpful to us as a select board if we heard what the assessors are projecting in terms of a revenue growth for the next five years? If they, if they look at it that way? And what, what the town manager's office is thinking about in the next three to five years must have additions in order to meet the requirements that are on his plate at this point? So that we at least have, we at least have some context there? And there may be other things that go along with that, but I'm trying to not preclude looking at new ways of implementing some of these things, some of the goals that have already been iterated. But at least giving us that context. And, you know, we hear this, and then along with, we know that the finance committee is working on some kind of guideline, albeit we're having difficulties putting our arms around it, but some kind of guideline about what they think is sustainable. And if we could get some pieces related to that, because I think we need that, at least as part of how we proceed going forward.
And I think, I think that also gets to the, the question that is embedded in, in section four point seven, public facilities infrastructure. But we get it further in the, in the discussion of really the charter charge mandate of all the town committee. In other words, we have an incredible gift of volunteer service in this town. And I think one of the things that I witnessed throughout the long process of putting together a long-range plan, which intentionally had representation from all, as many of those, I won't say the emergency committee or, but all the boards of operations were there. And many of the interests of the committees were reflected, if not all. There are, the, the level of overlap, which to me just says the level of opportunity for synthesis and for efficiency to be gathered is, is great. And I think we're seeing that, I think we're seeing responses to a belief of a need in things like the finance committees having created this sustainable financing approach. It's a response to their sense of a need, whether or not, and I'm not taking a position right now, that's their charge. But they're responding to a sense of something that's not being captured somewhere else. And I think that, that Mike, you've done a good job of sort of drilling this down and saying, what are the select board's specific responsibilities to capture? And I will say, as a, you know, in the beginning of my second term, I, I go, I can't always tell you I can put my finger on exactly what our, I mean, I can find the documents that will tell me what our goal, our goals and objectives are. And I know what our charge is, but sometimes the responsibilities, you know, if, if the point of collective wisdom has to sit in this room regularly, it doesn't mean we always hold it. We're taking advice and, and input from everyone, especially the town manager. But if, if we're supposed to be the, the, in the wheelhouse of this ship, right? Then we need to be thinking not just about what are the, what's just in our, in our view shed, but, you know, what's the, what are the other terms of pronetic? And capturing at least the intent. And I really appreciate, Mike, the, the pieces you put in terms of assessing and evaluating. Because I don't think we, I think you're right. I don't think we have that in front of us. I don't think we could, I think each one of us have the benefit of time spent in this town and have an inherent sense. We don't, it doesn't always get captured. And I think having those assessments so that we can discuss them specifically would be really, to me, would be very useful. So that, as Linda said, we could say, yes, the planning board, because they are a planning body, is already marching. That's not surprising. Other bodies aren't necessarily set up in the same way. I know that the, the need I see out there that I, I react to is that I don't think Concord as a whole readily appreciates the multiple stages that all of our town departments go through to anticipate and get to future points. And I used, I just mentioned NAGA, for instance. I think people react to the sense that we're in a, we're in litigation. But we're, but they haven't been able to be a part of the process. All of which is very legitimate of, of vision, planning, steps towards implementation, necessary regional cooperation. All of, you know, all of these things are captured here. But each project that the town takes on has had some piece of that. And I don't know that we assess that well and therefore have the ability to allow Concord to react to it outside of town meeting, which tends to be about a budget. You know, we get to immediate, we don't get to build. Unless you're engaged enough so that you go to all the planning board meetings or engaged enough so that you're going to all the public works meetings. But I'd love it if we could, as a select board, have a place to remind everybody. I mean, the town manager captures it regularly in his town manager report, but, well, but I'm just saying. But I don't think that, I think one of the things that we have an opportunity to do through, starting with these assessments, is reflect, you know, what is the state of play? Where are we? Much more confidently. And maybe as is being quoted, the select board can model this from the select board's piece.
So related to that, you know, I, having said earlier about, and we're all acknowledging that, you know, there's pieces of this that are already going forward. There are big items on the table right now. New school, we desperately need, you know, to look at facilities for.
The town?
For the town, in a different way. Just take those two alone.
Right.
You're talking about huge budget items that, that could then impact everything else that we want to do between now and then. And if you talk, if you go to the, whether we're talking about these bigger issues, when you go to the most interested towns, departments, and committees related to whatever that issue is, whether it's social service need or whatever, there is obviously in-depth knowledge about that particular topic. But there is an insular, by definition, a somewhat insular approach sometimes to tackling what the real need and problem is. And also, which doesn't always have the, the lens of looking across departments or across the region or, or new ways of addressing these issues. So, so looking at the bigger assess, you know, the bigger assessment pieces, to me, is important.
So what's the best way to take our first step? Because I do, I think a lot of times, one of the things we want to do is to avoid recreating the deal all the time. And I do think, just looking at cybersecurity planning, you know, there was a meeting at the library because they have the same needs. And they came in and talked about it. I don't know what the school department is doing in that regard. But, you know, I think if you had the different, if you will, players come and have a meeting, say, what are, you know, to me, how are they being handled? You know, that's probably a relatively easy structural. And I don't know how you deal with cybersecurity, but getting the different parties that need to be focused on it is not a difficult task.
But if you, but if I understand your point correctly, if just taking cyber as an example, if. if you have three or four major, you know, the schools, the town government, and public safety, and the IT department, all presenting to us at the same time, or presenting to the town, or however we do this, we're also demonstrating the cross-fertilization
Right, yeah.
in terms of addressing
Yeah.
major goals and problems.
So I agree with that approach, but I'm thinking that something in the, like cyber risk, cybersecurity, if it's not on Mark Howell's to-do list, I'd be really surprised. And so having an agenda item that says we ought to tell the IT department to do that, doesn't feel like the right course of action.
No.
It's an assumption.
But if they brought, if we brought him in to inform us in the town.
So I don't think we even need to.
And you could even simply ask for a report.
Exactly.
Wouldn't even do that. I would just simply write here, ask the Town Manager, this study suggests that we assess town facilities, assess our social services programs, and assess our IT to deal with these kinds of things. Is that happening?
It is.
No, he's just suggesting that that's the way.
So that would be a first thing.
I want to hear you have the IT folks coming to talk about it.
And when Mark is done, let's invite him in here about it.
And then you do have the benefit of the citizens commenting on what we might have overlooked, because that does happen, and they have experience. Our citizens have experience in technology.
So that's why I had these in here that way. These are easily dischargeable responsibilities that, independent of how we would see growth, have to get done. So let's get on with it, okay? The fourth one, creating a town task force, is probably a really good idea.
Which one?
Task force to assess.
Goal number eight, the last bullet on that page, create a task force to review the Charter's Charge Committees to see if we could clean things up a little bit.
Didn't they take major steps to that? When you were Chair the first time, you had every charge be reviewed. And we did do some of that, is this one still?
Well, we had, what we had was, we had committees look at their charge.
Were beginning the same people to be on volunteer committees to look at their charges.
But it would, I think, what this is aiming at is not just an individual committee doing this.
Their charge, right.
But laying out all of the committees and saying, look, five committees have a responsibility for talking about potato fields or something in there. It's like, we don't need five.
Well, can some of them be consolidated? I mean, I think the Tax Fairness Committee was set up with one goal in mind at one point. You know, maybe, I think, they've done great work, but perhaps to be consolidated with another committee to be dealing with the same issues. But the specific issues they're set up for.
So the way I would resolve this one is, I would say myself, yep, that's a really good idea. I don't exactly know how to go about this, so we don't stumble over ourselves or pretend like we're going to do something and never get it done. So let's ask Mike or Jen or somebody to take a little dive in here and come back to us and tell us what we think might be the best approach to this. Alice is right. When I was Chair, I asked committees to.
So we wrote the charge in entirety. Some of them we hadn't put into the development of a revised charge. We did some of that looking.
I mean, the contingency review.
We didn't look at the town charter, but.
The town charter's been looked at very depth.
So I would think, you know, we could just ask one of us to take a dive into this and come back with some plan. And then that whole page is done.
So I've got a question for the purpose of today. And do we want to, I mean, Mike, the overlap between the top 10 from the, from the co-chairs and yours is pretty, pretty large, but I think.
Virtually the same.
Virtually the same. There are a few on the top 10 that didn't get caught. Again, thinking that the purpose here is, part is to model what we want to see happening, right? By doing it as a Select Board. We can go through this right now and sort of say, what's being done, what needs to be assigned, let's get going. I don't think that this fully captures what Linda and I were trying to tease out, which is how do we help transition to a new Town Manager as well? That was never intended, because it's a separate, ongoing issue. But because so much of this, separate as our goals of the, as a Select Board, separate from what the Long Range Plan intended, that the Town Managers' top 10 goals are going to be different. They're going to be overlapped, because there should be, but they're going to be different. So how we help that happen over a transition, I think is also an ongoing responsibility.
That's why I would propose that we ask the Town Manager to come back to us with sort of a discussion like we've just done with the things we've extracted. His report back to us is, here they are, I'm making this up, obviously, here they are, where are we doing these five things? Here are four things that we've been thinking about, we haven't started. Here are three things that we haven't done anything about. And some of these are very contingent upon how you resolve some other matters. But again, we would be able to see those things that are already underway. And we would be able to identify those things that are in process. And we would then hopefully be able to see these mega questions continue to bubble up. Making this up for Chris, where Chris will go back and say, I understand this issue here, but until we resolve the issue of growth, I'm not sure how I could, or even if I had a point of view, as far as I'm concerned, as Town Manager, this is the town's problem. Once you decide what you want to do as a town, I'm happy to make sure it gets done. Or I've got a real strong point of view about this, but I don't, whichever, but.
And I think, Linda, you teed that up with Chris when we were first chatting about this. And I think that's what we hoped for in the
Form.
In the format was. I know that Chris, it may feel more robust now. And I don't know whether you had the guts to start to think about that.
A little bit. How to approach it. The Department Heads all have a copy of the report. And they, many things they too are moving forward with some things. Because the report partly reflects their thoughts on different things and then also things need to happen. But it isn't coordinated. We do have, we have a structure, I think, that helps with coordination in terms of having a weekly Department Head meeting where we update each other. And I report to them on what your discussions have been. And then we have a monthly Department Head meeting where we dig into, deeper into complicated issues that go across departments and that sort of thing. So we have a structure that's well set up to talk about infrastructure problems, cybersecurity, all of that type of thing. So I think through the, I'll suggest, I will dig into it, ask the Department Heads, where are we on certain things? They will be looking for you to set the goals for this coming year. That's been the practice.
Right.
The Board sets the goals, if these are the priorities, the departments then, the Town Manager then develops his goals based on those priorities. And then the departments merge into it. So that's been the cascading approach that we take, which I think works. So, and it seems like maybe we would be doing that a little earlier this year rather than in July, when we usually do it. We're starting sooner, which makes sense because of the transition.
Yep, right.
Good. And I think Alice's point, she's identified a critical question that I don't know how to tackle, but needs to get tackled. So we need to develop a way to wrestle the question of what do we mean about growth and what is sustainable? I raise the same question with respect to housing. We called, we've talked about putting these Warren articles on to create some money. I did it, I'm all for it. I think it's a great idea. But I don't think we're clear on what our goal is, and it's affordable housing. I know we want more affordable housing, but there's certainly differences of opinion about what kind, how much.
Where.
Where. So I think, again, you know, we can have financial instruments that will create the funds for us, but we need to have a conversation about what is the goal here. And that, I think, is a subset of what is our growth goal. So my hope is we could figure out a way to tackle this issue of what do we mean by growth.
And I think that also, you know, we looked all over through the report, it talks about concerns about transportation, traffic, parking, how does growth come into play? If growth is deemed as something good, how do we manage the transportation flow? We have all these activities in here. It's a great, you know, idealist thing of a to-do list. So we create a cultural district, which then brings people in.
And where they park.
Where they park, what's due to our current traffic problem. So we have to think, and I think that's why this plan is thought to be, you know.
And what kind of businesses do we want to have in our town centers?
Not as our choice.
Well, but, but yes.
You can drill it all the way through to something we already see in the town warrant.
So it's, you know, this feels, for me at least, it's always a little bit like swimming through, through merk. You know where you're going in your head, and you know where you're going to pass milestones, but you don't always see what's, what's in the soup around you at every point. And, and I think that, Alice, you are right. I mean, do we want to grow is one of those big questions. It's who's, you know, we try and get at who's conquered, knowing that we don't have the right to, you know, we get to choose this somewhat intangible for a short period of time, because it's always going to change. But the one thing that we've seen throughout documents is this belief in our historic nature, our village centers, that sense of comfort. But I would never be so, have the hubris to say, I know how to answer, do we want to grow? You know, as how do we maintain that sense of comfort?
Well, that's why it's a hard problem.
Right.
So you've got these implicit trade-offs in the way you think about it. So that's why we have to have some kind of discussion about it. I'm not suggesting we do this, but when we had the energy issue that surfaced by a citizen coming forward with a petition. And the town's decision-making process is, oh, well, this may be a really good idea, I'm not really sure. I think we should have a more fundamental discussion about energy and energy goals. And so we created the Energy Futures Task Force, and they did their work, and they came back with some proposals. And we took them to town meeting, blah, 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 and we go, oh, the way we go. So I don't know exactly how to deal with this issue, but something like that. The Finance Committee, even though you've heard my objections to it, has said sustainability is finances and issues. So what we're going to do is this. I can not be wild about the approach, but I certainly get the problem. So, and that committee is the one who's taken it upon themselves to try to wrestle this problem to the ground. So I think our job is to figure out what's the mechanism for trying to wrestle this problem to the ground of what do we mean by, what is going to be the character of growth in Concorde, the next whatever, consistent with all of the other values that have been articulated here. I don't know what that is, but that sounds like the job.
Is growth the question?
And I think it depends on what we mean by growth.
Exactly. I understand, I'm just saying, is there another question that?
Probably so. Do we want to have a commercial maybe over by the Virginia Road near Hanson? That's not going to necessarily affect the traffic congestion, you know, I don't know.
But let me play out a scenario that I'm just making this up. We know, as Linda pointed out, we're at some point going to need a middle school. If you've been in it, I don't see how you avoid that question. And at some point, we're going to have to do something about town facilities. Okay. And there's probably five or six other things by the time. So we know we're going to need some money over a period of time. And the assessor could tell us based on projections, what he sees happening next five years with residential, which is like 93% of our revenue. So here's where we need to go, and our revenue projections are here. What do we do about this? It may be really, but I don't know what, but, you know, and then there's, so that, that's the question. All right, if we have this gap to make up, how best to do that still maintain it? Maybe we designate the area of 2229 Main Street a commercial zone, and we close the Gatling movie that thing. Maybe Virginia, I don't have no idea. Or property taxes are going to have to go up.
Right.
With Warren Lee's, oh, they're going to have to go up, because you can't do that. We could do it, but we would wreck the character of the town. So, I mean, I think if we start discussing what the options are, what potentials there are, you're going to be able to, probably not everybody can go like this, but you're probably able to weed out, you know, some areas.
And you'll also see the time horizon on that. So to, to none realistically, it's 20 years down the road, and these needs.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
And we had, in some ways, a brief discussion of that when we had the Walden Woods offer for the conservation easement on the Southern Panel area. That it was kind of, what are the needs and what are the future and the financial implications? And I think a lot of those discussions are still going on, but I think we need a broader.
Well, it's because we're dealing with them episodically, instead of, to the point of, look, if this is where we are, then as Mike just said, we're going to have to come up with a plan. Not everybody will be happy, that's a given. But at least everyone will be, will understand that there are decisions that are being made, because you don't, otherwise, you don't get to do this.
Well, if you get the input from those that weren't happy, and often that input is helpful in terms of arriving that solution, if you want to arrive at it immediately.
Just for completely, so the way to, I'm going to think about this, is this is what we said we would need. Well, maybe it's too bad.
Yeah.
Right. In which case.
Forget about consolidating town offices, just divide this room up, you got nine offices, the way it goes, right? So, I mean, those are the.
That's the discussion.
Those, that's the discussion.
Right. Versus an assumption, because sometimes I think we operate as an assumption. Like that we're not going to do that, so we have to, we have to build partitions.
And the other piece of this that I don't want to leave unmade is, you know, the cost of personnel. And personnel changes and increase, that's another large piece of this.
That's one we've called out on.
And there should be some projections on that. That could be helpful.
We do have one of the recommendations here, so hire an economic development person on staff. So there's, you know, you look at that, what is the return on investment on our new person? If we don't have goal sets.
We just hired a sustainability director, you know, public chairs officer, all in response to articulate.
Administrative help?
Yeah, community, so.
And using that example, return on investment to whom? To the town, to private sector, to both, to non-profit?
Tax base?
Tax base, yeah.
So is it the next step to ask Town Manager to come back to us? And what other steps should we be taking more immediately?
So I think there are two ways, two things we have to do. We have our yearly goals. And I think that that's an easier process at whittling away, like what are the, what are the goals out of all of this that we think are important enough that rise to the top, that the new Town Manager should really spend the first year addressing, because they are key concerns and priorities of the Select Board. Things that you all will be, you know, reviewing and keeping on track for. So that, those are one year goals.
Yes, because I know, I just want to acknowledge that unfortunate term of phrase.
As you said, I think that would be, you'd be doing a great service to the new Town Manager to have identified those goals instead of asking. to have identified those goals instead of asking, what do you want to do? That would be a great...
First test.
Well, I think there are some goals that we can articulate for the short run, like some of the things that we need to get done, so let's get on with it. And then getting ourselves organized to talk about growth in some particular way. And, you know, that's going to be an ongoing process, so the new town manager is going to be able to plug in. I mean, the last thing I think a manager wants is somebody handing them a box and say, here, do this. But on the other hand, you don't want to go, hey, guess what? We have a problem, off in the town, call this one and solve it. So I think getting the process going, and these first few months that the new town manager is going to be here, he or she will be involved in this, and we'll be able to have the kind of influence we would hope a strong town manager would have. So I think, going back to what I said at the very beginning, I would suggest that we talk to various committees we have liaisons with, bring them up to speed about what we've talked about. We ask the town manager, put together a statement, and I would include in that an update as to telling us that there is a feasibility study going on, that there's, that he thinks it's a good idea to have a social service assessment, or not, I don't know, we're in his mouth, and find out with Mr. Howell, where it stands on some IT, spread assessment, I'm sure he's doing something along those lines. To ask one of us to take a little deeper dive into, you know, should we have a town governance committee similar to the one we have before, it's a different mission.
Is that a one-year goal, or is that a multi-year? I mean, I'm thinking that we need to think about this in two steps. One is the, what we would normally do in a one-year goal, we have, you know, grand vision for financial stability, preserving our economic outlook, and typically, you know, we have all these generalized goals that I think we need to have some for that one year. And I think, I'm wondering whether that particular goal is not a one-year goal, that we should be investing all of our time and energies into reviewing the charter of every committee. I, I look at that and say, that's a good thing to do, but not an immediate thing to do.
So.
So I wouldn't put that on as my long-term or short-term goal.
But there could be some restructuring that comes down the line.
Well, my suggestion, remember, was to ask one of us to take a little dive and come back with a plan or a proposal. And the proposal could be chill out, we're not going to do this right now.
We've got big figures to think about.
That's fine, I've got no problem with it. And we might make, if you're implying, we might just make that decision right now, just to put that on. That's next page to do this.
So your two-step process is to identify the goals, short-term, that you do want to achieve, and maybe identify some things that may, put it to the side, put those things aside for whatever reason. So we're not going to work on those, that's the two, that's...
I follow, or you start looking towards, you know, what is the five-year?
The long term.
The long-term implementation. Like, what if these are our highest priorities, middle priorities, lowest priorities? And review them every year, because things, priorities can shift. If we have some major new development in town, you know, in the medical, you know, community, that may change what our priorities look like. But it gives us that prioritization, like what's really important here, that we should identify as big issues that we will take on as in that next year's yearly plan. So that we have, the first year, I think, is huge because we have a new town manager. And a lot of our direction will be, what are the primary goals for the community that the town manager will be looking to achieve? And there'll be some metrics, I mean, yeah, that's marching words, we hired this person and he's got to perform. So I then think we will get, this list is a great working list, to figure out, of these, some are being done, greater check marks, some are nice to have, like what does it take to hire an economic development person? What would the person do?
We're not ready to do that.
We're not ready, so that goes into the, somewhere in that five-year plan, review whether this would be a needed position.
It would be done by an existing position.
I would even subordinate it further. I mean, it could be the case, again, if we address this growth issue, what if, just making it up, comes back and says, you know, we really, we don't want to put much in the way of growth here. Want to let, real, how public or affordable housing and private homes, that's fine, but otherwise, come on, we don't want to do anything. Well, then maybe we come back and say...
Right, we're not going to change our commercial footprint.
Right, or maybe it gets focused to where economic development, tourism, I don't know. But I would just subordinate it to the question of wrestling this question of growth. So I would put that as our primary...
Question.
...response, goal for the coming period is to come to a better consensus, if you will, of what the town means to talk about growth.
So that, you know, when I think about that, that's a really big topic to think about. It involves things like, what are the limits to growth? What are the constraints of growth? Do we have the natural resources available? Do we have enough water supply to accommodate growth? Or without major infrastructure improvements? How are we constrained by our school system on the type of growth that we want? So those are big questions. And I think if we were to address that in a, you know, start thinking about answering or develop, or think about the question of growth might be a really good starting point because a lot of this would fall out of...
Well, and also, what are the, the current actions that are ongoing? That are ongoing because of anticipated need, growth? Or are the current actions simply about our, a static comfort? I don't think they are. Again, I'm just, for the sake of this discussion, I'm thinking about mega, right? We are in the middle of a long, a long-term process that protects our use and is rebuilding an infrastructure need, but it's also increasing that infrastructure need in anticipation of greater need over time. That should be educated by, you know, what is that greater need? Is the greater need simply the way our infrastructure is going to pull from that water supply? Is it an assumption about our changing water table? I, again, it's a...
And that could also be a constraint.
Exactly, that's...
Should we sort of plan to delegate certain issues here to individual members and plan to meet again just on this topic sometime a month or so?
Well, again, I think we have an action that we, I think, have something we've got. That is asking Chris to come back to us, including some of those questions that were asked on Plan Element 4.7. We've said on the very first one, the development stuff, that's gone away because of the higher level questions about growth. On housing, we can state, we're already moving ahead on the funding part of housing. What's missing, my point of view, is a statement about what we're trying to accomplish. So I would think that's going to be part of the growth...
Discussion.
And I would hopefully be able to get the finance committee's participation in this discussion so that the finance part of this whole thing is not sort of over here, but is formerly in the center.
And I would also suggest the schools as part, yeah, I'm just saying, as part of growth profile. Yeah, there are significant issues, so.
So, I mean, you start to think about who the constituency is that's going to get together to do this. But I think, I think that's, that's where we are. And then again, I still think it would be wise for us to talk to each of our liaison committees to make sure they're, you know, they've looked at this, and, you know, we know the planning group has, they've been very active with a lot of stuff, from the agricultural committee, the NRC...
All the committees weighing in on this.
No, I mean, in terms of action.
Yep, the straw commission's in here, ECs in here.
So get some kind of reporting on what actions are on, are currently already underway.
Yes, and also being able to articulate to the committee our concern about subordinating some of these to the issue of resolving a concept of growth. So there are some things that the committees can get done, but there might be some things that they're thinking about doing that really we would say, whoa, hold on a minute. We really need to resolve this bigger question before we go off on... As an example, I'm not sure I really believe that, just to give some kind of example we have, as Alice pointed out earlier, there's a Warren article about limiting formula businesses. Is that a good idea of that? I don't know. But, I mean, I do have a point of view about it. But, but if we had a resolved statement about what our growth thing looks like, we would certainly be in a better position to know whether that made that central. So it might be fine to do it now or not, depending upon your point of view. But there might be some things that they've started, and we might say, I think we should hold on to it.
And then the select board goals, you know, they're part of that. And normally, that's, I think, last year, we approved it in August.
I think we need to do it earlier this year.
We need to do it earlier.
By June.
And I would do it after we've heard back from Chris, so we know where he is on these kind of things. I think we could begin our dialogue. We have a history of our own for our goals, so it's not like we're making it up all by ourselves.
Some of them are always on the table, we don't, managing the tax rate, ensuring our, you know, economic future. Yeah, but some of those are just occurring. But how we do them, they need to change it.
And I guess the question I would then have, is this something we, you see us doing just in a regular board meeting? Or should we have another meeting that's devoted just to the issue of the long-range plan and the board's action relative?
Well, I think we could update on, from our goals, from liaison connections, from the town manager at a regular board meeting. That might be two or three meetings in a row that we have to do. That's fine. But if we're going to tackle this growth issue, that might be just dedicating a meeting to that or having a separate...
But we can see that, we can make that determination.
When we get to it. So first is this immediate term of feedback we're going to get about what's going on, where our goals are, what criticism, liaison issues, and that.
So, and, and in terms, just to wrap my head around the growth discussion, I would envision one of the action steps fairly early would be the start of a forum, or some kind of greater public discussion on this, starting with some planning towards that. I don't think what is, what is the future of growth in Concord is something that the select board is going to ponder and respond to. So how, what the, how do we tackle that from a process?
That's the...
That's a big question. And the question is, you know, we don't want to duplicate the numerous town discussion forums that happened in Vision Concord. We want to take what's here and see, you know, where is, what do we think the set, the planning board and Vision Concord really didn't get to the point. They decided they weren't going to tackle the question of...
They decided to.
Yeah, so somebody should look at growth. And we have all that, I don't know, we need new public forums on growth, we might want to do that, but there's a lot of information there.
And I would think that that forum, if it is, would come a little bit later rather than early because I think it's important for the board to have information and kind of decision rather than just, you know, people getting up and opining on, you know, what Henry David Jerome would have done.
So with this as a subject, do we want to assign review of sections to each select board member with this subject in mind?
With growth in mind?
With growth in mind. I mean, how do we want to tackle culling the, the information?
Because there's information inherent in the, throughout this.
Right.
You know, hiring an economic development person, new zoning bylaws that encourage cluster development. There aren't growth things explicitly stated in here. And maybe that's a good idea, because we've all had our sections that we reviewed from our lens, whether it was the housing, or sustainability, or infrastructure.
Yeah, we provide calm house.
Right, and they're in here. So now the question is, do we want to look at what came out of that and say, what is this due to a growth profile? Is it encouraging growth and at what rate? What are the implications, or what are the assumptions, really? I think it's interesting to do, good idea, Katie.
I mean, I don't think this would take a long time. I think this is, this is going to jump out fairly easily, but we might... I guess what I'm trying to do is, I don't know how else to tee up the gathering of, you know, of thought that doesn't, that doesn't repeat.
Oh, sure.
But that gets to one part, I think we need to look at the limits. You know, what are our constraints to growth? If traffic is, comes up here a lot...
Right.
If traffic is a concern now, what does growth do to traffic? Or what do you do to change the traffic flow to allow growth to happen? And does this, does Vision Concord do that or not?
And what's in our control as the town of Concord? And what jumps into the municipal or the, you know, into the regional discussions? So, you know, I think separating those two questions is important. Just saying, I don't like traffic in West Concord, right? I can say that, but am I, yeah, but my, my ability as a, as a taxpayer here is limited to affecting Concord. I can't say I don't like the increase in number of cars going down 62.
All right, well, it's... So there's sections 4.2 through 4.8, I think fiscal plan is 4.8, if I recall correctly. So the idea would be to divide those various sections up, and have each of us be responsible for coming back with what are the significant growth implications associated with that question.
Yeah, yeah. Does that help?
Yeah, I think it would help. I mean, in the sense of now we'll have a whole lot of stuff to look at, it'll probably scare the hell out of us, but...
And with the new lens, it's like, what are the potentials for what, the future?
And then assign it for each of us to...
Well, I think we need, I think we can divide up pretty easily. But I think it's quite important that we are very clear on what question we are...
How you guys manage to do it.
Yeah. So maybe we first could go through it and see if we could easily divide up.
And on the question of traffic and congestion, we need to somehow keep in our mind the regional aspects of that. Big developments happening in Medford and Sudbury, how many of that would be transit-oriented? And what are the things that we can do to encourage better transportation? Might be, you know, acknowledging that there are all these new developments happening. Do we say no cars, you know?
Well, isn't that, isn't that one of the questions we're, I mean, get to, we divide this up, right? And then we decide, what are the metrics that we're, or what are the questions we're going to ask ourselves? One of them is, you know, what in this, this section is affected regionally? You know, what is regional, what is not? What are, therefore, what would we, what could we, you know, what would affect that? I mean, to your point on, in terms of other, you know, neighboring communities' growth, you know, we could say...
Where are the transportation corridors, or what are the impacts of other communities doing a similar process?
Right, would it behoove all of the neighboring communities to go after the TIP plan with the road grid, high, 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 I'm just throwing it out. In other words, I'm not adjusting that, I'm just saying.
I don't think that's, I don't, I did, but I don't think that's the question we want to start with. I think the question we want to start with is more in line with, we pick what it works first. Economic vitality. The, you could summarize what the long-range plan says. Essentially, for economic vitality, we should invest some resources in economic vitality to facilitate growth. All right, whatever. So what are, what are the positive and negative impacts of growth on economic vitality? It's something like that, we want to start developing this list of, well, traffic's going to be included. includes, bleeding water resources, but whatever they might be, rather than trying to figure out solutions to.
So in other words, key up the, the questions to ask before we come up with the answer? The plus is in my business. Yeah, what are the trade-offs?
What are the, what are the, is economic vitality a good thing? Well, yes, it is because, but on the other hand, in transportation, you know.
So isn't it sort of like taking the opportunities and threats out of a SWOT analysis? We're going in each one of these and saying, what benefits growth and what is?
How would growth impact on, sorry, who's. I think someone will, I think we should just take a crack at that suit we got.
Yeah, some of it's been done here already. That's how it's got to be, you know, one of the call-out sections. But I think if we're looking just with the, trying to get at the question, what is this due to our population growth and our economic growth? Because this looks at, it acknowledges that there are pros and cons and that they're interrelated, but it's really about how we think about growth and how we.
Do people want to switch areas they'd like to focus on?
Do you want to go towards what we're already familiar with or should we, we throw it around?
Up to you. It's up to everybody.
Well, the two areas I would be most comfortable in here, like I could contribute more would be economic vitality and fiscal, what's, I forget what it's called, fiscal plan. Those are the two areas that I would, not all tiers are doing both, but.
Well, I'll put you down as a long tier.
Yeah, thank you. What a guy.
Linda, do you want to?
Yeah, maybe housing and land use and zoning, unless someone else wants to.
What is it, number four, three?
Four, three, four, four.
Yeah.
Jane, how about you?
Let's see, why don't I do four, six and, I'm trying to not step on anybody else's So that would leave two more left.
Cultural and historic resources and.
I think, I thought, are we doing cultural and historic resources? Well, you know, if we want to have public districts that have big events and big calendars and place people in. Okay, why don't I do four, six and four, what? So that, I'll take whatever's left.
I'll take one of those.
Oh, right.
I don't mind.
Oh, right.
I was hoping we'd get down to the, there's only one for these hours.
So.
Only year left here. I'm happy to do transportation or public facilities. I don't care, I'll do any of them.
So four, five?
Four, five and four, six are open.
So I'll, I'll do four, five.
So you are, what's?
Mobility and transportation.
What do you want to do, two, three, four, five, six, you got seven? Public facilities?
That looks like a good job.
Okay.
Good try.
So I'm, so I'm doing open space and public facilities?
No, that was, no, I did open space and public services.
Yes, that's right, okay.
Oh, I had, I'm sorry, what was that? I had Linda for land use, which is, oh, not, not open.
That's four, four. Linda is four, three and four, four.
Perfect. Jane is four, six and four, one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alice is four point five and this is four point seven.
So when do we want to have this first conversation?
Yeah, let's give her a family meeting.
Knowing people's schedules, there's got some travel involved, what is the next step that we can do this?
Well, this could be discussed at, I'm not, I'm just kidding. Everybody will be here for it.
I think our next full meeting is two, four.
Meeting on two, four, that's been soon.
And that probably is soon. We got two, eleven?
Eleven is the FinCom hearing, so that'll be an abbreviated meeting. Tuesday, the nineteenth, is that?
I go through the night, too.
That's not, no hearing that night, so I think that would work.
You say the nineteenth.
And should we start with Chris's little meeting?
Yeah, but I think it does make sense to the liaison depending upon how, you know, we should be in the process of communicating.
Since, can I just bring up one other item? Because this keeps coming up and probably rightfully so. Mike keeps saying, we don't seem to have a housing goal. And so here's a case where, should we be asking the staff person, planning, I guess at this point, vis a vis, even if she delegates it to us or whomever, to, to identify what the goal or goals are? Because there's, you know, you've got four different groups, we, and, 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 three, three or four different groups, two of those groups, the Concord Housing Development Corporation and the Concord Housing Authority have both articulated their goals, but somehow that doesn't resonate that we don't, because I keep hearing over and over again, we don't have a goal. So if somehow.
So typically, the staff person would propose a goal and then somebody, either this board or the planning board, would adopt the goal. So I can ask her to propose a goal, but then hopefully a citizen board.
And there's a joint housing committee that I think that's been scheduled for February seventh.
I should ask you about that meeting, it looked interesting.
So the, the, this seems, this has now become more of a regular occurrence, particularly before we go into a meeting. And I think it's as much to give our staff an opportunity to hear what's on the minds of the housing groups, but also for the housing groups to hear each other about what, what's on their minds. So there's an opportunity there to maybe, because there's already something happening. But I, I just want to be, Mike rightfully brings this up, but we hear it over and over and over again, so I want it answered, so that.
If a number is the answer, you know, maybe to make, to always be eleven percent above, yeah, eleven percent affordable housing goal and set it as a percentage instead. That's just a thought. I know you're looking for a number because there's finances attached to whatever that need is.
I'm just looking for a number. I think that's the too-easy fallback. There's a state ten percent thing, end discussion. But you know from every time we bring up housing, we have points of view about the kind of affordable housing and where affordable housing should go. So to me, the number's five, ten percent, that doesn't solve the problem. We envision affordable housing in Concord being individual or small number of units scattered throughout various towns as opposed to large-scale developments. Supporting that or opposed to it, but that's.
So we, so we actually heard this latter comment from both groups, so maybe it's just confirming it. And we've also heard from both groups that they want to be above ten percent.
That's a, that's a bottom number, Tom.
Yeah, it's a bottom number, so at least ten percent and, and, and to the, and to the extent that funds are available, they would like to exceed that. So again, maybe it's just helping, taking those two concepts and coming out officially so that we all can point to the same.
Well, it may, it may or may not be something that the board adopts.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, it's even more complicated than that, but suppose you get that done and we have this nice conversation about economic growth, well, affordable housing could be in conflict with economic growth. It's land, so it's going to be a store or.
And the third part of it is the affordable housing, the non-subsidized affordable housing goal. Because that's what we keep hearing from the community big time, is the non-subsidized housing affordable.
What's our goal relative to things that don't count towards the state?
Exactly. What's Concord affordable housing like?
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, you really need both, you can't just.
And just as a, how do we capture that question in what is growth? Right? Because that's a, it's a different, it's not, do we want to grow or not? It's what?
We keep hearing from the citizens.
Well, but it's a.
It's going to be, it's going to be a back and forth. I mean, on the one hand, you could define a growth profile of the town and then say everybody gets to that, too. On the other hand, you could have subsumits defining what they think is sustainable and a goal.
Right.
And that would inform what level of growth you could attain. So it's going to be, it's going to be a back and forth between things like housing, energy, finance, infrastructure, can't do that, we can't do this, and hopefully, you know, you get.
I guess I keep seeing.
Interacting vendor.
Right. But I, I keep seeing, one of the conflicts somewhere embedded in this is cluster density and rural, and a, and a different housing model. Because, I mean, that's, that's the beach point. It's the pitch point on almost every one of these metrics.
I highly recommend to take a look at appendix D of the plans online because it says, here's the projections of potential units for Concord that by 2030, we will have added a thousand housing units. That's growth right there. And so here are the maps of where it's possible.
Well, that's where we say it right now.
So it identifies where it could happen. This is just by the numbers, but it's a discussion of, you know, what do a thousand units look like, where it is located, how many are.
That's an implication for tax revenues, so I mean, that begins the process, okay, it's this high, not that high, and so.
You know, it's sort of where we started in terms of what are the assessment and finance department projections, isn't it?
Well, there's a financial assessment that would follow from that growth number, for sure. But it depends upon the kind of housing.
The cost of housing.
Limiting the sign over behind the depot, there's now square footage constraints on, on some of the lots over there because of the size. If that wasn't there, it could be bigger houses with more tax revenue and.
Why do we allow a six thousand square foot house when it could be two, two houses at three thousand each on, on a lot because of constraints, but.
Well, I think initially the plan was we go from ten thirty to noon time. We've gone over that, I don't know if people scheduled it according to that. I'm happy to stay and have further discussion or otherwise I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I think this is a big conversation.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you all very much and have a good rest of the weekend.